Call this meeting in order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is a proclamation. Anyone receiving, want to join me up at the podium?
Mr. Mayor, can we get all these guys up here?
Absolutely.
Want you, I would do my best to put them up here. Felipe?
Thank you gentlemen. Whereas Thursday, February 19th, 2015 will be the 70th anniversary of the United States Marines landing on the island of Iwo Jima in the South Pacific. And whereas the operation was the main turning point of the war in the Pacific Theater because of its strategic location to Japan. And whereas, to honor all of those in support of that critical operation from offshore as well as hitting the beaches. And whereas, to honor and remember the 7,000 United States Marines and the 22,000 Japanese who paid the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom. And whereas, the Town Council finds it appropriate to honor four of our Silver City residents who were there and are with us today. They are Fred Clark, Eugene Lewis, Curtis Maxwell, Felipe Ortega. They are still serving in our community today. And now, therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, in recognition of this historic event, do hereby proclaim February 19th, 2015, as Iwo Jima Day. And encourage the community to honor these special residents for their sacrifice to our nation, to remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice, and to honor all of those who have served and continue to serve. Thank you gentlemen. Would you like to come up for a picture?
If we could come up here. One, two, three.
I'll be a little quicker. One, two, three.
These gentlemen are 89 and 90s, and Leonard Pritik, an Guadalcanal veteran, is 94, gone on 95. Thank you.
Thank you, all of you. Next item on the agenda is public input. In following this, one of the, one of those who signed up was Cliff Tavernier. If you would like to speak on behalf of the proclamation, you're welcome to. Next person is Lucy Whitmarsh with the Silver City Main Street Project.
Hello, I'm Lucy Whitmarsh with the Silver City Main Street Project, and I'd like to invite you all to a celebration in Santa Fe that's on February 18th. It's been declared New Mexico Main Street Day. And it's to celebrate 30 years of successful community economic development across the state. And Silver City can be very proud that we were also founded in 1985 and are celebrating our 30th anniversary the same year as the state. The New Mexico State Legislature has declared Wednesday, February 18th, 2015, as New Mexico Main Street Day to celebrate the program's 30 years of successful economic development and revitalization of traditional town centers. All invited to join, local Main Street representatives at the AAM celebration held in the New Mexico State Capitol Roundhouse that day. And then, this is part of what we'll be celebrating, is that for the last 30 years, New Mexico Main Street has been a powerful force for revitalization of communities across the state. Combining historic preservation with asset-based economic development, New Mexico Main Street works with local affiliates and partners to rebuild resilient Main Streets as the foundation for healthy communities. And certainly in our community, it has been a very successful program, and we do receive tremendous amount of technical support from our New Mexico Main Street and different types of education and training programs. So, we really appreciate being involved in the program, and I hope as many of you can attend as possible.
Mike, we'll get to you in a little bit, you're on this list, but... You would love that. And I also see that there was a Yulay Lea Lewis who is here for the Marines, are you still present? Yulela? Okay. Bruce Ashburn? Just observing.
Actually, that's not true.
Okay.
I would, I would just like to take a couple of seconds and thank the Town Council for their representation of our wonderful city in Santa Fe over the last couple of weeks, and for all the work that's gone into that. I just really would like to say thank you, because that's a huge time commitment on your parts as well, and I don't think you got paid extra, so.
Mr. Baldwin, Silco Theater?
James Baldwin, a county resident, however, I do all of my shopping, from cars to groceries to everything else within the confines of the city limits, the town of Silver City. I have questions about the upcoming ordinance that's going to be before you very shortly, and that pertains to the Silco Theater. I do not think that this is worthy, and I have several reasons for that. One is, if it was worthy, free enterprise would have taken it over and would have, would be pushing it forward. As it is, you're going to rely on funding, which comes from the state of New York, the Hawaiian Islands, and everybody else except here. I haven't lived here all that long, but I do remember attending the movie Chariots of Fire downtown, and that was at the Hila Theater. Why not renovate the Hila Theater? I know the town does own it, but it may be more viable. After the Hila closed, then we had two drive-in theaters. One is where the Bell Store is, and then there was another one out in Arenas Valley. Both of those went under. Then we had the theater, which is now occupied by United Rentals. It couldn't make it. You people are in competition, not with Light Hall and its facilities up there, which are good, but you're in competition with Netflix and computers where you can view these things at home in your own privacy, in your own convenience. In looking at the newspaper articles, this one is dated January 28th, the town of Silver City could sustain a shortfall of some $650,000 if it were able to enact a 3/8 of a percent grocery receipts tax. That ain't good, that isn't good at all. Another article, City Sees Less in Grocery Seats Taxes Last Year. That is not good. If we continue in this fiscal year at the same rate that we had last fiscal year, we will be short some $322,000. I don't think the town needs to be so elaborate and extravagant and elegant as to have a renovated theater downtown when it's going to have trouble making perhaps some of its own payments. I do believe that we should have some input to the public, to the public regarding who is going to be making the selections for the films, how many films per week, how many showings per week will there be, what sort of projection facilities will there be, what sort of sound? The concession stand, will it be open during the showing or will it be closed during the showing so people are not walking back and forth and crunching popcorn? How much is it going to cost to just, just get the theater going, not the stage? Because according to Ms. Whitmarsh, on a tour I had several weeks ago, the stage behind the theater screen is a separate and distinct developmental project. But how much is it going to cost to get this project off the ground? And if it's all that good, I think the town of Silver City should bear the entire weight, the entire financial burden of it. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope it does not pass.
Next item on the agenda is council comments, Council Edison.
Thank you Mayor. I just wanted to say that I'm so pleased that the town honored, and Silver City honored our four veterans of Iwo Jima for their service to our country and their continued service to our community. It's just something that, to have survivors of World War II still living in our midst is something that we all, on a daily basis, must, must thank them for their service, it's rare. So I wanted to report back on the results of the conversations with the Councilor of District One that was held on January 22nd. And I want to first thank all of our special guests that attended, that included Chiefs Reynolds and Hydrick, Captain James Hernandez, Town Councilor Linda Aiman Smith, and Town Manager Alex Brown. And I especially want to thank Councilor Linda Aiman Smith for her note-taking, because I could never have done that and done the actual meeting. So about 30 citizens attended, residents, many of them from District One. One of the things that Chief Reynolds talked about was Neighborhood Watch, that if you want to form a group, that you should contact him, and he'll assign a police liaison to that group to get it going. He suggested that folks with the burglaries that recently happened in our area, and just in order to secure your, your home, to clear brush and use appropriate lighting. So lighting at night, lighting that will come on to scare away folks thinking that they might be able to enter your home. To communicate with your trusted neighbors if you're going away, so they'll keep watch out for your home. And to set up a communication network in the neighborhood so that anyone will know what's, what's going on and who might be doing suspicious activity. He requested that folks be alert and report suspicious behavior to Central Dispatch. And one of the things that none of us, and I had never heard this either, did not realize is that when you call Central Dispatch non-emergency number, you can call and request anonymity. And you can also request that your phone number not be captured. So we're hoping that that will increase tips coming into Central Dispatch, because you don't have to worry about giving your name, you don't have to, or, and then you specifically have to request that your phone number not be captured, okay? So just wanted to put that out there. Attendees expressed an appreciation for several detectives that have been working hard on their cases where they've been burglarized, and they greatly appreciate that. And one of the other things that came out of the meeting was a desire to put on the town's website up-to-date information about particular legislation that's affecting the town. You hear, I've talked about it, I know that Assistant Town Manager James Marshall has presented, and I think tonight, our Town Manager Alex Brown will be presenting some of those things. We want to let folks know what's going on and how you can assist us, if it's something that's not going to work well for the town, or if it's something that we hope will pass. And that's being, that's sort of in motion right now and in progress, so we hope to have it up on the website fairly soon, if we can. It's complicated to try to do these things and try to explain what it is that the legislation's about, so that you don't have to wade through and try to understand some of the legislation that's actually proposed. I wanted to mention about the Grant County Day that was hosted by the prospectors and how much I appreciate, we had folks from all over Silver City and Grant County coming up and coming together and making a really great impression on our legislators and on the governor's staff about how committed we were to ensuring that those needs in our communities in, you know, all of the mining district, Silver City, the county in general, are met, that they're funded. And I've heard over and over again how they wish other communities would come together that way. It was incredibly impressive. And being a prospector for, I think it must be maybe 15 years, this is the first time that I really felt that we really gelled together as a community and really made an impression. I know Rick Lopez from the local government division had apparently commented recently to Priscilla Lucero of the Council of Governments, how he thought he was just going to a meeting with Priscilla and a few other people, and there were 60 people in the room, and all of the folks that were at the table were saying the same thing. We need to get our grant agreements early, you know, earlier than they have been, not delayed 18 months, six months, but that they need to be put out. And that when we ask for reimbursement, after we, it's a reimbursement cycle, you spend the money and you get reimbursed, that the reimbursements actually don't take two or three years down the line, like one of our municipalities is experiencing. So, all in all, it was just wonderful, and I want to thank Councilors Kano and Aiman Smith for being there as well. And also, I'm sorry, Council Ray, that's right, because he was down on the floor presenting the colors, correct? So it was a really great turnout, and I know the mayor was there in spirit with us as he was twirling away on his clients' taxes, correct? Oh, and Mr. Brown was there, we had lots of, lots of other folks that were there. I want to thank the Silver City PD for taking care of the noise complaints that occurred from Goff Park this Sunday. Apparently, we had a gentleman ask his right, using his free speech, but it was a little too volatile, carried throughout a lot of the town, including District One. So I just want to thank them for dealing with that noise complaint effectively and efficiently. And last, but not least, I want to thank the mayor for an excellent guest column in the Silver City Daily Press last night, where he talked about fixing the food tax, the proposal by the New Mexico Municipal League to do that. You've heard the mayor talk about it, you've heard me talk about it, you've heard the former mayor talk about it, you've heard Town Manager talk about it. This is something that's really critical, and involves that $650,000 that Mr. Baldwin talked about. And rest assured, Mr. Baldwin, we're doing everything we can to make sure that we don't have that deficit and do not have to increase taxes to do it. But that's also, we're not, and I think you'll find out as we talk about it later, the council is not, the town itself is not the one that is really paying for the south pole renovation, it's actually going through the Silver City Main Street and through a variety of loans that the town is backing up. They are paying the loans back on an agreement, and it's through sort of a lease agreement. So it's really, the Silver City Main Street is a separate entity from the town and is part and parcel of the Economic Development Department of the state of New Mexico. So hopefully that'll be clarified a little bit more for you. But all in all, it's just been a fabulous several weeks, being a Silver Cityan and a Grant County person. We really did a great showing up there at the, at the legislature. Can't, can't say enough about how great that was. So thank you to everybody who came up to the state legislature, and thank you to everyone that supported us here at home. Thank you Mayor.
Council Aiman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hold on, I've got five thanks here. First is, on February 21st, we celebrate Lover Library Day at the Silver City Public Library. Everyone's encouraged to come down for refreshments and workshops. And one workshop that day will be a portra workshop for youth led by our own lead lawyer, Elise Stewart. This is an opportunity for you portra slam fans out there to get an opportunity for coaching. Secondly, I want to talk a little bit about this legislature. You guys may remember that on November 14th, 2014, our Town Council adopted a resolution urging the New Mexico Legislature to take action to cap interest rates on high-interest small loans. Let me just give a couple of examples of how such loans can devastate people. In a 2012 paper by two attorneys at the University of New Mexico Law School, Adams and Martin, a number of actual cases were described to the predatory industry in New Mexico. One case study was of a customer who paid over $10,000 on a $4,000 loan. That's double, but maybe not too awful. Yeah, but another case documented an unfortunate individual who paid over $11,000 on a $1,500 loan. On average, in New Mexico, a small loan borrower can expect to pay around 340% interest on loans. And I just want to call out the names of these bills. We have HB 24, which is a House bill, HB 36, which is a House bill, and SB 72, which is a Senate bill. All of those are scheduled at some time to be heard and committee. When they are scheduled, hopefully, the town will have a link-up so we can put a blast out and say, "Citizens, please call so-and-so," and encourage them to pass that bill to committee and get it out on the floor. Third thing, in December 9th, 2014, the council approved a resolution to direct the town staff to submit a grant application to the finance authority for funds for a master bicycle grant. Well, the good news is, we did that, and we got some money. The bad news is, we didn't get all the money we asked for. But I'm proud to say that we're looking for other sources of funds, working with the Southwest of Mexico Clock and other entities, because we know in the town that having a bicycle safe and friendly community will pay off in terms of health, recreation, and other quality of life issues for our citizens. And I want to thank Council Edison for inviting me to her conversation. It was informative for me. I did not know that you could call the Central Dispatch number and request to be anonymous and request to not have your phone captured. So that really struck with me when the chief said that the way to really get action is to build a file on a house or a car or some sort of insurrection see happening. So it led me to know that neighbors can call and call and call and call and not be fearful of retribution. So I was really grateful for that. And the last thing is, I want to acknowledge a couple of people in the audience who have been really helpful to me. First, my friend Alan Long, who chauffeured me up to the Grant County Day and really smooth. So thank you, sir. And also, I want to thank William Joseph for touring me through his neighborhood and talking with me about neighborhood issues, concerns of what it is that he wants to be doing, way on that anonymity on the Central Dispatch actual service level. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. With warm weather coming down, I wanted to make a comment to the town council here. Let's see if we can get together and see what we can do for downtown now that the sun is coming. Let's put a bug in here, maybe we can have something on a Friday night, a cowboy night, maybe another night, a hip-hop night. Let's see what we can do for downtown. People are crying for us to do things downtown, let's see if we can work it out. Another thing is that in the back alley, behind Wilton Creek, or anyway, maybe the town can make a roadway, a brick roadway, and for those businesses that are there, maybe they can expand, take their tables out there and have people go out there and have a drink or a lunch, or just to view the back part towards a big ditch. Also, people can, back to the center business, a comment about the legislature, we had a lot of fun there. As a matter of fact, we had some people singing there. And we had a lot of people join us, and we were singing in Spanish. And Tony Trillo and Jerry Walls, Priscilla Lucero, us veterans, it was very enjoyable. I hope the people go and take the time and enjoy it. Silver City needs to be presented up there in Santa Fe. Thank you.
Council Card?
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I have is, for every person who voted in the school board election or attempted to vote in the school board election and found out they lived in the wrong district, thank you. Your voice is heard loud and clear, and it's appreciated by the people that worked on those campaigns, and by the people who were elected, and by those who ran. My other thing is, just to talk about the prospectors a little bit, I have to say, the proudest moment for me was sitting in the Senate Gallery, and actually standing by that point, in the Senate Gallery, and watching the Vietnam veterans present the colors. It was an awesome moment, and it brought tears to a bunch of people's eyes in the audience, so we hope that you continue to do that every year. Thank you.
We are. Thank you. Does anybody need round two?
No, sir.
With all those comments, I could reiterate some, but I don't think anybody would appreciate that, so I will move on to changes to the agenda, and I'd like to move new business item A up before reports. Is there any objection to that?
Yes, sir. No, sir.
Okay, so 11A will be following approval of minutes, which is the next item on the agenda. Council Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to approve the minutes of the town of Silver City.
I'm moved to approve the minutes of the town Silver City Regular Meeting in January 21st, 2015.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Amos Smith?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion is stated.
We have a motion of second for approval of the minutes of the town Silver City Regular Meeting, January 21st, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of the town Silver City Audit Report for Fiscal Year ended June 30th, 2014. Mr. Stone?
Thank you for putting your head ahead. I really appreciate that. Okay. It seems late in the year to be getting your audit report for June 30th, but the audit report was due by December 1st, and it was completed in input to the state auditor prior to that date. It's just that I was gone for a while after the 1st of the year, and they're waiting for me to present it. But I want to make, I wanted to assure you that the audit report was timely, and it was released within, in a timely manner, first of all. Second of all, get right to it. Your opinion on the financial statements is unqualified, which is as high an opinion as I can issue. Your opinion on compliance with federal program requirements is, again, unqualified, as high as I can issue. And we basically had one little comment related to a budget issue, which is in the back of the report, but it was not of any significance whatsoever. We had a little glitch at the end of the year where we got a check run in the wrong, in the wrong fiscal year, but by the time we got it corrected, we couldn't amend our budget at that point in time because DFA wouldn't let us do it. So, it basically amounted to, it was nothing of any significance. I would like to point out that even though we talk about Silver City being small, you guys are managing almost $70 million worth of assets as a council. I think it's important that we realize that, well, not all of it's cash, obviously. You've got some buildings, and you've got some infrastructure. However, it's, those things are relatively important, too, and we spend money on them every day. So, it's important to know that, that even though we can consider Silver City, say, a small town, it's got, we're still managing over $70 million worth of assets. Other than that, that's all I can, that's all I really have to say, except to remind you guys it is an action item. It needs, either needs to be approved or disapproved by the council. I'd appreciate if you approve it because I really don't want to do it over again. So, that's what I'll have. I'll entertain any questions you guys have.
Is there any questions for Mr. Stone, Counselor Bettison?
So, it's a question for you, Mr. Stone, but also for the town manager. Well, the little glitch is not, not anything really major. Is that something, and I need to ask probably the town manager this, is that something that, given the governor's executive order, is that going to be anything that they're going to throw in our face?
Absolutely. Because what the, what the, his executive, or excuse me, her executive order says is if you have significant deficiencies or material weaknesses related to governmental grants, this was neither of those. This was an other, the categories of comments are material weakness, which is the worst you can get, significant deficiencies, which is the next one down, and then other. This was simply an other thing, and all it was was just in a, in a, one or two funds, we had a little over expenditure budget. Not that we didn't have the funds available. All we're saying is, is that we ended up spending a little more money than we had budgeted, and we didn't amend our budget. That's all it is. Absolutely not. It won't have any effect in that at all.
Yeah, it was basically a small claim.
And I guess I should say one other thing. You know, the state auditor has a rule that you can only do it 12 years in a row, and we, this was our 12th year. So, I would like to express my appreciation to the city manager, actually, the finance directors, where my appreciation goes. It's the same person, but I like the finance director position, and all, and his staff from the top down, starting with you guys, but certainly with Alex and his staff, they impart an ethical aura. They try to do things right. They try to do things correctly, and they try to do things with excellence. And it's as good as it gets, guys. These, these people are doing a hell of a job.
I just wanted to thank you for your service the past 12 years. I know that it's contractual, but at the same time, I know that the town staff don't fear you walking in the door. They know that you're someone that's there to just make sure that you showcase their talents at really making our budget as good as it is and doing everything that they can do with excellence and integrity and honesty. So, and my question that I'd asked was really to make sure the public understood that that would not in any way harm us and that it was just simply a clerical error, a little glitch that happened. So, I think that that's important. But like you, I want to, I want to thank our town staff, our finance directors slash town manager, but they're all standing in the back, I mean, they're sitting, they need to stand, and be thanked for all their hard work.
As you know, that's Renee, Amanda, Anita.
Steven.
They do, they do an excellent job. They work very hard, and I really appreciate what Mike and his staff do. It's really important that throughout the year, Anita and I were actually calling them to get their advice on how to handle oddball things that happen throughout the year, and they've always been there to help us and to ensure that we have the resource to make sure we do things right when sometimes we just don't know which way we're going to go. But I really appreciate everybody and what they do.
Well, thank you.
Any others? Any other questions for anybody? I will make a, you know, a comment from a slightly different direction, and I'll start off with, you know, the, the staff has been wonderful, and it's, it's easy to be up here when we have a staff that we can trust and just does good work year after year after year. But that being said, where we sit, we still need to do our due diligence and monitor, and it'll be sad to see Stone McGee have to lay off for whatever period of time they have to lay off because, you know, from my experience as, as a CPA and working with them and watching them work for entities on my behalf or, and also watching other firms, you know, I don't like to use the word old school, but these guys bring in a handful of people and sit there and go through documents like no other firm. It's not really common practice anymore. A lot of, a lot of other firms, they're, they're giving you this little, this little list. You mail it off or email it, and you might get a couple of questions, but more likely you're just going to get a report with maybe some suggestions or something. It's, there, there's a tremendous amount of value added to, to the work that Mr. Stone and everybody else at, at his firm provides, and it's, and it's a diligence that really helps me feel extremely comfortable with our staff. I, I know that we do well, and we also know, we, we've heard comments from their firm on, on other entities that have been audited. They're not afraid to give comments and express those and really, and, and sign that letter with, with problems. If there's problems, they're going to let us know, and I, and I have the full confidence that, that they would have had there been any issues. So, I really appreciate it and can't wait till that period of time is over that you can come back and, and keep monitoring us.
Apparently, here it's two years, but I don't know. I'm firing off a letter to the new state auditor saying, trying to say that the rural communities are damaged by that rule, you know, and that it's kind of like what Mr. Obama said with your insurance, if you like them, you can keep them. I think that's what it ought to be for auditors. It is for lawyers. You don't have a certain period of time that you can serve architects. And so, I'd like to look at that particularly because in, in southwest New Mexico, Silver City particularly, it's hard to find an auditor. It really is. You're going to have to, you'll have to get somebody from Cruces or Albuquerque or somewhere like that. And so, I'm hoping that it changes, but if not, currently, the rule is 12 on, 2 off.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Bettison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm moved to approve the town Silver City Audit Report for Fiscal Year ended June 30th, 2014.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion is stated.
We have a motion of second for approval of the town, of the town Silver City Audit Report for Fiscal Year ended June 30th, 2014. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion of second as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does this need a roll call? Roll call.
Counselor Bettison?
Aye.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is reports. High Desert Humane Society's Animal Intake Report. Mrs. Ogas?
Good evening. Heidi Ogas, President of the High Desert Humane Society. As you know, we have an agreement with the town of Silver City to house animals, and what I'd like to give to you tonight is our number, our intake numbers for 2014. You should have had some handouts in your material. The first one that I'd like to go over is the animal intake for the town of Silver City for 2014. And that report is broken down by month, and it's also separated for dog impound, dog stray, dog owner turn-in, then you have a total for the month, and then the dog returned to owner. And then the same thing for the cats, the cat impound, cat stray, cat owner turn-in, cat totals, and then return to owners. I would like to point out that on the cats, the return to owners is extremely low, extremely low. One thing that we are implementing that I hope will make a difference is any animal that leaves our animal shelter at being adopted will be microchipped. We just started that in 2015. So, any animal that's picked up as a stray or an impound, if it did come from the Humane Society, we will be able to trace it and hopefully get it returned to the owner. We also took in impound fees of $2,796.91. And licenses, we sold $5,427.50 in licenses. We had a total for the year of 2014, a total dog intake of 414, a total cat intake of 339. Is there any questions on that one? The other report that you have here is just a yearly comparison from 2007 up to 2014. You can see in 2007, the, the total city intake for dogs and cats was 1,137, and the total intake is now down to 753. So, that's really good. It is, we do have sort of upswings and downswings. We're hoping that it will continue to do a gradual downswing. Hopefully, we can get a handle on the overpopulation. Do you have any questions on either of these reports? Any other questions?
Counselor Connor?
Actually, I do. As a social media user, I'm on Grant County goodies a lot, and I see that there are more missing and lost pets than I can even keep track of. Do you have any insight as to why the numbers seem to be going up or anything that the community can do to take care of their pets a little bit?
Well, I don't know that we have enough time tonight to go over what all we could do to take better care of our community's pets. The one thing I do really suggest is that people contact the Humane Society to see if their animal has shown up there. I am amazed at how many people don't think to look there. And I think the other, I don't know that it's gone up as much as with something like Grant County goodies, we're now more aware of what's going on, of how much is there.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Not on that.
Not on this at all?
Not on this.
Any other questions at all?
Wanting a question?
No, but I was told to be prepared for questions.
Counselor Amos Smith?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I was having a question for the, for, for Ms. Ogas. She said, in microchipping, has the adopted, are you also offering microchipping for pets that are already in homes?
Yes, we are. During our vaccination clinics, which are the second Saturday of every month, you can, you don't have to be getting a vaccination. It's from 9:00 to noon. Our next vaccination clinic will be this Saturday on Valentine's Day, and you can bring your animal in, and we can, and the veterinarian will microchip it while we're there for a small fee, but they will microchip it.
Yeah, because the chips cost, I mean, you've got to track them. The next question was that clearly there are little bits of ups and downs in terms of overall dogs and cats that are brought in every year or caught. I think of it as going to jail and also then just being picked up as a stray and, and stuff. But I know that you are active in trying to control populations with some of your services, are you not?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Are you going to talk about that a little bit later, or is this an opportune time?
No, this would be fine. Go ahead and ask whatever question.
So, what services do you offer help with the community in terms of controlling overpopulation?
We have several different things. One is education and the understanding that, that animals don't have masculinity. They do much better health-wise if they are spayed or neutered. So, a lot of it is a, is a cultural swing, a shift in trying to get people to understand the importance of spaying and neutering, male or female, either one, both of them need to be, to be spayed or neutered. We also have our HAL program, which is HALt a Litter Today. And our thrift store, Our Pause Cause, all of the funds from our thrift store downtown go to our HAL program. And since inception, which I believe was in 2002, we've raised almost a quarter of a million dollars that has all gone back into the community. Our Pause Cause alone has raised over $100,000, and that all goes back into the community in financial assistance for spay and neuter. It's really simple. All you have to do is call any of the four local veterinarians, make your appointment, come by the shelter, and we'll give you a coupon that will help with about half to three-quarters of the cost of the spay or neuter.
That is fabulous.
And I would like to add one more thing on that. In March, we will be doing Beat the Heat, March Stop the Madness, and our coupons will be $20 more for dogs and $10 more for cats through the month of March.
Okay. Don't wait too long. This might be also an opportune time to ask this question. I live in a neighborhood where there's a house that is not occupied. Naomi lives in Wisconsin, and there periodically are litters of kittens in the basement. I know that cats aren't supposed to be littering in basements, and Shuri comes in as helpful as he can, but the neighbors and I were talking, and they wanted to know, is there something that as a neighborhood we might be able to do? Take advantage of this program, somehow capture the kittens and bring them in? Could you offer up with that?
Yes, I can. They're more than welcome to come into the shelter. We do rent live traps. There is a deposit which is refunded when you return the trap, and we charge all of $0.50 a day for the rental on the trap, and you can have it for up to 10 days at a time without checking back in with us. You can set these live traps as long as you set them on your own property. You cannot put them on anybody else's property or on public property without the owner's permission. And you can set them on your property, trap the cats, and if they are feral or unable to handle them, what we suggest is you make arrangements with the vet ahead of time so that as soon as you trap the cat, you can leave it in the trap, take it straight to the veterinarian, have it vaccinated, have it spayed or neutered, make arrangements to get the coupon from us, and then you can take the cat back. They'll put the cat right back in the carrier. You can take it right back to where it was and, and put it, put it back where it came from.
Thank you. That might be really a good neighborhood project to do. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other staff reports? Mr. Brown?
Mayor of City Council, thanks for allowing me the time to come up and present my stats. I've been asked to keep this very brief and to the point, so in the spirit of keeping to that, by opposing my stats, are there any questions? I'm kidding. Okay, I'm going to give an overview and then I'll drill down on the statistical information. If you can't hear me, please get my attention. I'll try and speak up a little bit better. On it, the 2014 statistical information is derived from the Department Records Management System, Review of Reports, Municipal Court Documentation, Children's Youth and Family, Juvenile Probation and so forth. I have added one more document to the handout, which is page five of your new packet. As in any statistical compilation, there is assumed an error rate. I apply an approximate rate of plus or minus 2%. In most cases, the error rate is not existent, such as the number of calls for service and self-initiated activities. The number of calls for service declined in 2014 over 2013 by 1,059, which is a 7.5% decrease. The number of self-initiated activities by officers increased over 2013 by 2,584. That was 41,446 to 38,862. The officer's increased performance for the year contributes to the decrease in areas of concern, with the exception of roadway crashes, which increased by 8%. Overall, the indicated statistical information has decreased in most areas documented. The overall indicated index crimes such as murder, forcible rape, robbery, simple and aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, stolen motor vehicle has declined from 1,081 in 2013 to 929 in 2014. As indicated in the packet provided on page one, larceny is the highest of the four-mentioned eight crimes. However, there was a marked decrease in larcenies from 569 in 2013 to 487 in 2014, a 14.4% decrease. If you refer to page five of your documentation, there is a breakdown of the areas of concern along with the crashes and also domestic violence. If you take a look at the larceny section, it's broken down into three categories: theft from motor vehicle, shoplifting, and other. Shoplifting continues to be our biggest larceny crime occurring. Let's go back to the front page. Domestic violence saw a higher reporting rate in 2014 by 6.19%, from 517 to 549. Successes on page one are arrests were up by 22.79% in 2085 and 2014, from 1,698 in Citations were up by 12%, 15,807 in 2014, from 14,097 in 2013. This is all categories. This includes crashes, this includes moving violation, and it includes animal calls for service citations issued. As a side note, this year, we will mostly, most likely see a significant drop in citations issued because more focused activities, which will be explained at the end of the presentation. Reported forcible rapes decreased by four in 2014, 10 compared to 14 in 2013. Aggravated assaults decreased by 10, 45 compared to 55 in 2013. Burglaries decreased by 52, from 201 in 2013 to 149 in 2014. Damaged vehicles saw a marked decrease from 2013, 215 down to 133, a 38.14% decrease. Other criminal damages saw a slight decrease from 239 to 226, a 5.44% decrease. There is where increases materialize. There were two more robberies in 2014 than in 2013, 10 compared to 8. Reported crashes up by 6 from 2013, 473 to 479. I make note of this because this is all crashes combined, which are roadway crashes as well as private property crashes. So reality is, there was a 1.27% increase overall. Animal complaints increased by 1 and 1/4 over 2013, 1,135 compared to 1,121. As noted on page 15, if you'll refer to page 15, I have provided a breakdown of citations issued for the various animal offenses. It should be noted, the animal control officer issued 247 citations for violations. Health service personnel accounted for the remainder. Driving home to the influence remained pretty much the same in 2014 as in 2013, 80 and 79 respectable. Any questions before I conclude? Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Reynolds, could you very briefly say what's the difference between a larceny, burglary, and robbery? Since I heard that you use terms pretty much interchangeably.
Well, so, robbery. Robbery is the taking of any item from a person with either force or the threat of force, i.e. a weapon. Burglary is the unlawful entry into a business residential, and it could be a shed, a vehicle, a watercraft, for the purpose of committing a theft or a felony thereof. Larceny is the theft of any item that belongs to another. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will quickly cover each page for an explanation. Please stop me if you have any questions on any of the pages. If you turn to page two, that page is just a comparison between Silver City Police Department and Grant County Sheriff's Office. Page three is an overall glance of 2014. Page four, Silver City Police Department additional calls for service. I included this one in there. So when this is released to the press, it also indicates what calls for service that we also handle, other than what I've already given you. So example being, if you want to drop down and pick any one of those, and I'll pick one, welfare checks that we conduct throughout the year, is going and checking on a person, checking on, to be sure that they're okay. We did 824 of those this last year as a public service. Any questions on this document? Next page is 2014 totals for the categories as previously discussed. Next page is page six, which is 2007 to 2014 year comparison. So that will give you an overview of all categories that we've discussed from 2007 forward. Next page is the crime index from 2009 to 2014. So basically, what the, again, what the crime index was, I set it at what the population and I ran it off to 10,000, and also did a portion or a column, excuse me, at 15,000 population, which at the time, we kind of considered our service population. Since then, we've figured that the service population is between 17,000 and 20,000 on that. So the rates at these, each individual crimes will be lower anyway for that category. Next page is from 2009 to 2014 comparison with the Grant County Sheriff's Office and Silver City Police Department. Next page is the traffic crash reports analysis, which this is a drill down for each month. If you flip to the next page, at the bottom, gives the statistical information for number of roadway crashes, private property crashes, and what the percentage is compared to 2013. Next page indicates the top worst intersection for traffic collisions in Silver City. It'll be page 11. Silver Heights, Juniper, Hudson, and 16th continues to be our worst intersection for traffic crashing. Next page is day of week, time of day for reporting crashes. Friday continues to be, for the last two years, our worst day for crashing. The time period has changed a little bit. 2014, from 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. is our worst time of day for crashing. 2013, it was 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. Next document is the five private property crashes locations, the worst ones. Walmart continues to be number one on that list. The next document is the 2014 citations issued per violation. And that's just a drill down on types of violations that occurred and citations were Next page, we've already talked about. Next page is just statistical information on traffic crashes per intersections. Next page is the arrest categories, 2004 to 2014. And those are the murder, rape, robbery, all assaults, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft. So this document is one showing how many arrests that we have made in those categories. Any questions on that one before I go?
Just quickly, I appreciate you going through that. One of the things I would really appreciate is, on the crime index for the population, you know, one of the concerns a number of people have is when you simply look at our borders and our population, at times, our numbers look like we have a high crime rate. But as everybody's aware, you know, our borders haven't changed a lot, even though just a few miles outside of town has grown significantly, and that's evidenced by us supplying water to 20,000 Grant County residents already, and the fact that just because we sleep 10,000 at night, we have a tremendous increase in population during the day. So I appreciate the 15,000 that you have there to help index and give a truer result of what our index is, but I do agree and do believe that it is considerably higher than even the 15,000 during the day. So that's something good. Now, that being said, we always have, we want to, we would love to have zeros under everything, and we appreciate you working towards that end. Is there any other questions or comments on this schedule?
Yes, sir.
A quick question that I, how's the community policing activity and actions that have been taken? How have those been?
I'm glad you asked that. If I may, I'll cover the rest of this, and it will probably answer that question. Some of the strategies we are working on for the year are the changes in activities associated with community-oriented policing, which we have been working with Assistant Town Manager James Marshall. Active traffic enforcement on our major intersections with crashes is an example of this. As an example, Silver Heights, Hudson, Juniper, and 16th. And let me kind of explain just a little bit prior to. What we did was we took and made problem statements for various areas within the city. Part of those issues, and it goes back to the citations, what I mentioned, that you'll see a reduction in the number of citations issued, because what we're going to start doing is focusing on our problem areas. So example being Silver Heights, Hudson, 16th, and Juniper is one of our problem areas. So what we've done is we put a matrix together, and each quarter, you want to accomplish certain numbers, if you will, operations and direct patrols to impact crashes in that area. What we're looking for is tangible, that we can now come back and produce and get to the city council and show to the citizens that this is what we're doing, this is what we're accomplishing. At the same time, at the end of each quarter, we're going to be reevaluating that program to determine if it's actually being successful, i.e. knocking down the number of crashes. So by the end of the year, we should have a reduction in our top five traffic crash intersections as an example on that. So it's not that we're going to be out there issuing a whole lot of citations. No, we're going to be more focused on type of violations that are happening that's creating more of a public safety issue. So I halfway suspect our citations per month will be anywhere from 700 to 900 because of these operations. You probably won't see the citations up above 1,000 very often, depending on what type of operations we have going. So we're just looking for the major violations and impact those issues associated with As an example also, producing the same documentation for our areas of concern. Shoplifting, burglaries, and larcenies will be handled the same way, uh, through problem statements, uh, determining how we could actually work these in a, uh, progressive manner instead of reactive. So we want to be proactive in dealing with these items. On, on burglaries as an example of vehicles, um, we, uh, at one point were using bait cars. We ended up catching an individual who took an item that did not belong to him out of that vehicle that was part of the Walmart. We ended up arresting that individual. When it got to court and through a jury trial, he was found not guilty because jurors, uh, determined that, um, to a certain extent, that they felt that was a trap. Albuquerque uses those all the time. So it's, it's one of those that we would, we're going to revisit and to determine how we can actually use them. The other area that we want to do when we go, uh, with the burglaries, is we also want to go with preventive education and building a bridge with the community. We want to educate the community and, and put together preventive measures, such as neighborhood watching. Those are very effective in knocking down some of our issues on that. So we'll be working closely with some of the council and some of the neighborhoods to try and enact this, get them going. It only benefits the, the citizens. So in a nutshell, we're working on some ideas and programs to build that bridge with our community. We're already attending some meetings, uh, a couple of officers are going to be attending, uh, a couple of meetings this week in the downtown area. Uh, we'll be showing up at other, uh, meetings, public meetings, for the purpose of answering any questions that need to be answered. We anticipate during the summertime that we want to commit to having meet your officer. Uh, we'll do that several times, see how it turns out. We hope the public will come down and, and meet the officers, instead of meeting on what the lights behind them. Uh, we'd like you to get to know your police department. We also are doing, uh, what's called citizen contact, and when I release my January stats, I'm also gonna release that to the, uh, the papers, and there's several categories on there that are listed. Uh, when the officers go out and stop and talk to somebody in the neighborhoods, talk to a person in a parking lot, talk to a person in downtown, that's a city citizen contact. Uh, the officer asks if they have any input, how things are going, uh, what do you see, what's your perspective, and then he writes that information down. And if there's issues such as the need for frequent patrol, where there's problematic areas such as, as, uh, drug in a specific area, those will go to specific divisions within our department. If it's a roadway issue, we'll forward that up to Streets Department. So we're building this bridge and, and hopefully we're gonna be successful on it.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chief, one of the things that's been discussed in District One, um, actually District Wide effort, is from a number of, of people, is they would really like to work with our officers, um, um, to deal with drug houses and to eradicate them from their neighborhood. They're concerned about, um, just the noise level, the number of people that are in the area that don't belong there, um, there's, uh, concerns about property, you know, um, whether or not, uh, you know, the values will drop. Um, and they just wanna, they wanna make it known that they won't stand for drug houses in their neighborhoods. So I know that, um, it's not just in District One, but elsewhere, but I think that you'll get a lot of community members that will want to assist with that program, um, and to work with you on that.
Absolutely. If you call me, I'll set up a meeting, uh, meet with them or the neighbors. Um, I can meet with them individually. My door is open, and call me anytime.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Kyle first.
Uh, I just want to say that, um, having worked with Ed and James, they've been developing all of this, going through this, sifting through all this information, look, looking at, looking at all these stats from different perspectives and coming up with these different ideas, which they've, they've been coming to me and we've been looking at. And as we start rolling this thing out, we're starting to see things from a totally, completely different perspective. Um, you know, it's not all about giving a citation, you know, it's not about, um, um, you know, one thing that we, when we were going over these stats the other day, that, uh, we saw was, there's a direct correlation between the number of bench warrants issued by the court and the number of arrests. And a bench warrant is, is a warrant that's issued for a minor violation by the court for, for basically not showing up to court or for, uh, a broken taillight or failing to pay the fine or something small, where a lot of times, these people might have showed up to court, but the judge wasn't available or those types of things. And as we've seen the number of bench warrants issued by the court, we've seen a large number of arrests made by the department on those bench warrants, which in turn takes up a lot of their time where they could be out there making contacts with the public. Instead, they're spending an hour or two getting this person to the jail or, you know, in a lot of cases, the jail won't take them unless they have a medical clearance or those types of things. So they're spending a lot of time doing those types of things, rather than doing what, what they're looking at trying to focus on, on doing in the future. So, um, I think we're, we're headed in a positive direction, to be more, uh, community-oriented, and, and we want to work with the courts and with other entities so that we can, you know, not everybody has to go to jail because they didn't fix the taillight. But that's the law. If there's a warrant, they gotta, they gotta do their job. Um, so in turn, let's, let's see, we want to work with everybody and, and, like I said, communicate with, with the council and the community so we can, we can all do a better job together.
Just as a follow-up comment, uh, and, you know, uh, a lot of questions, sorry. Um, if you refer to page 18 on your packet, this will be an indicator for you as to what Town Manager is talking about. If you look at, uh, the little narrative section there on page 18, 2014 total number of arrests, 2085. Out of the 2085 arrests, 1,037 were for failure to pay, failure to comply, and contempt of court. Those arrests constitute 49.7% of our arrests. That's, that's quite a chunk that we spend time on. Just as a backup as to what the Town Manager was talking about, we make an arrest, we may end up, uh, being able to quickly get this person into the jail facility, still takes about an hour to do. If we have to run up to, uh, Hila Regional for a medical clearance, it could be anywhere from two to five hours on one arrest. So we're working on trying to change this issue as part of this program.
Somebody, uh, concerns somewhere, the resident talks to my district, is, um, the bridge is gonna close and they're kind of interested in how that's gonna affect traffic and how the police are gonna work on that. So if you could touch on that a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
I have no idea. Um, I can't remember the date. The, uh, date for the public, uh, to meet with Department of Transportation, I believe it's on the 17th?
February 17th.
All right.
They're gonna have their final public, uh, meeting, uh, to let everybody know their plans as to what they're gonna do and timelines. Uh, the town staff, we've been meeting, in fact, we met yesterday, right? So we met yesterday, was it last week? All right, Karen.
Monday.
We met a whole bunch of times, but we've been meeting quite a few times on, on traffic, uh, changing the parking downtown for short periods. Ed can talk about some of the things that, uh, just for traffic flow between Hudson, Broadway, Cooper, out that way. Uh, we're gonna remove some stop signs, change, uh, into a three-way stop up at Cooper and Broadway. Uh, we're gonna change, have, try to get the timing of the lights changed at Hudson and Broadway, as well as Bullard and Broadway, so that we have, uh, quicker flow, because we're afraid of the, of the, of the stacking issues there. Uh, the, uh, angled parking in front of the store right there by City Hall, it's gonna be changed to parallel parking until this is all, all done with. Uh, the DOT doesn't plan on closing the bridge until April?
Uh, be the first week of April.
April, yes. So they'll start working here, uh, around February 28th, somewhere around February 28th, but they're gonna be working under the bridge and doing some other things. Um, you know, we were also worried about large, uh, heavy traffic, uh, as far as the, the semis and stuff from the bridge, you know. They're gonna push everything out to Highway 90, um, South.
Bar up to 90 and out to bypass and all of that.
And they'll be coming around.
Or if they're headed to the, um, the dump to disposal of debris, uh, that direction on the.
So, so we, we've been planning quite a bit, um, we've been, uh, actually sending staff downtown, uh, to meet with the businesses, to ask them to inform their delivery vehicles to please come from, from the Hudson side. Don't try to come through Cooper and Broadway and to get to downtown. If you come from the Tucson-Lordsburg area, take the bypass and come around. Those types of things, uh, trying to be proactive with those businesses and, and things like that. Because we also are gonna most likely have a CBG project going on there in, in the Chihuahua Hill area. So we're gonna be having some additional construction, because we did get our grant, grant agreement for that. A- a- actually, the day before we went up to Santa Fe, they sent it. Um, but we, we, uh, so we, we should have that project going on there. Um, you know, what else? EMS, uh, the fire department is looking at during the summer or spring, summer, the, the fire season for especially the grass, they're looking at staging a vehicle on the other side of the bridge, so that we have a quicker, uh, response.
As for the law enforcement, we'll be, uh, picking up more frequent patrols in the area, and we want to slow that traffic down because we know that people will be coming in, uh, especially buses, uh, some bigger vehicles, or probably be using Cooper Street. So you'll see us more on that roadway. We're hoping that they will go around, but in conversation with the schools, they want to use that because, uh, your timeframe for routes is just gonna be kind of messed up for a while. Uh, so the likelihood of them using them. At the intersection of, uh, Cooper and Broadway, we could make some, uh, a couple of different changes, three-way stop as Town Manager said. We're also gonna stripe it so that we can push traffic over further towards the curb, just in case we have those wide charred vehicles coming through on that. So really, um, it's gonna be a fluid event to begin with. We'll probably make adjustments on the fly, depending on what, what is happening. My biggest concern is two points, the 180 West and, uh, Bypass Road, which is not in our jurisdiction, but more than likely we will be responding to any issues there, i.e. traffic crashes. And the intersection of Ridge Road, 90 South, and Cooper Street, uh, that's going to be kind of a nightmare. We're gonna John Potter as, uh, as quickly as possible if we start seeing issues either.
Yeah, I think there at that, uh, Cooper and Mandy, we even talked about, um, uh, talking to them about a four-way stop or a portable light that they might be able to bring in, because I think, who was it, Peter, that said that they, they had a portable light they, he's seen it in Arizona at least, where they brought in a portable light to, for the intersection. So, um, we're trying to think of every option possible, um, you know, we're, they, the state is going to bring in those flashing message boards to help, uh, direct people to the bypass road and stuff like that. Um, we're also look, uh, gonna do the message boards if necessary to help with additional traffic control, helping people go in the right directions and those types of things, where to avoid, where not to, where to go, where not to go, and, and those types of things.
Try and have this in place by, uh, at least the second week of March, so people start getting used to the changes that we're going to enact in the area.
Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of things. I think the portable light at Cooper and Highway Night, um, Highway 90, Ridge Road would be excellent because people try to dash across that, and if we have a lot of folks coming and turning onto Cooper, I mean, I don't think a stop sign's gonna work, to be honest.
It's a nightmare right now, I think.
Yes.
Have you ever tried to get across? It's a nightmare right now to get across.
Right, and so, and, and I guess the question I have is, you know, when we have, you know, we have the Blues Festival, which is gonna be three days this year, we have the rodeo, Tour de Hila.
Tour de Hila has a new route.
Yeah, well, what I, but really about visitors, folks coming into town to see this, are we gonna do any sort of signage to let folks know that for regular cars, we do encourage them to come to the downtown, because we don't want them to completely bypass?
Well, that, that's what we were talking about, the message boards were, the additional message boards that we were talking about. But like the chief said, it's gonna be a fluid situation as we see how people are reacting to the situation, to, we're going to be changing as, as needed.
So, then what about the stop sign that currently is by the Silver City Museum? Is that gonna be removed?
It'll be, well, they're gonna cover it. They're not removing it because we're gonna put it back.
But you're gonna cover it so that it, that it won't?
It won't be a stop sign.
Yeah, because that would just really hamper the flow of traffic.
Yeah.
If it was there.
Where I would.
Right. That'll be covered, uh, because what we feel is during certain parts of the day, traffic is gonna back all the way up to the.
Right. So, so, um, I mean, just, you know, I think that, uh, we need to, I know it'll be fluid, but I think we need to consider signage, especially when we have big events, um, because I don't think, I mean, we want to make sure that our visitor system don't go, like, don't know how to get into Silver City. You know, and I, I think that we need to work with the county on that too, if people get out on, on the bypass out there.
You know, we, we do want to provide as much signage as possible, but we don't want to provide so much signage people start ignoring it.
I agree.
And, and so, because, I mean, you go, you drive downtown right now, there's so many signs right now that, how, how many of those signs do you really pay attention to sometimes? Um, so we've, we, we want to try to find a balance that catches people's attention and, and make sure that they're effective, whatever we put up.
Right, I was thinking more about particularly off the highway, you know, as they circumvent the, the fact that the bridge is closed. I mean, that's really, I think, the concern.
That's what those message boards, that we would bring in.
Right.
DOT is, is gonna more focus about the bypass portion. We would focus on, like, during events. This way to the, to the Blues Festival or whatever it might be. It would be, uh, event-specific or, or time of the year-specific. Um, you know, uh, the bike race, uh, Jack and everybody has been very proactive in working with the chief and, and Peter about, uh, tying trails starting on the other side of the bridge, and then they adjusted a new route. they adjusted a new route downtown for the bike ride, which I think is pretty cool, the one that they came up with. So, you know, everybody's been trying to, we've been meeting it quite a bit.
I guess one last comment would be on the intersection of 14th, I think that's the one that runs, is that the one that runs in front of the Sonic? In Pope?
14 Silver Heights, 18 it was.
Yeah, yeah, because, and I know I've communicated with the chief about it, but there's, you know, some really nice plantings, which are nice, but they also obscure the visual field for people that wanna turn left when they're going south on Silver Heights to go up to the Sonic. I've almost been hit there three times, and my lights are on in my car, it's broad daylight, but people don't understand the dead intersection's fairly wide. It's gonna take you a bit of time to get across, and so I think if we have traffic that's going around, the truck bypassing coming through there, that, I don't know what we have to do to the timing of that light, because I actually saw someone almost get hit by a truck that decided to run the red light a couple days ago, so.
So I think that's part of your talking.
I'm gonna enforce it.
Yes, yeah, and I know it is.
I submitted a second request to Peter Pena, just go ahead and clear that off. Since the first time, what they did was they contacted the downtown Main Street, because they're in charge of those mediums. And certain people are supposed to be doing the upkeep who sponsor that, hasn't happened. So I submitted a second request to get that taken care of. So hopefully this week it gets it up.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Yeah, because those plantings, while they don't look like they're very dense, they do obscure vehicles that are in the, that are going north from Pope on to Silver Heights and, you know.
Going from a dip up a hill, and that's sitting at the top of that hill, and obscures the opposite side.
Correct.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Marshall's been updating us on what he has been monitoring. Do you have anything to report on any of these?
I think, this sort of leads into what Councilor Bedison was talking about with the website. Right now, being that it's the very beginning stages of the session, as bills start moving and doing things, we'll start putting bills that are actually moving and have some possibility of being enacted, and giving our point of view of how it would affect the town, so that the public can call our legislators or the legislators and get more involved with the process. So I just did that more for you, so you could see some of the bills that we're tracking. He gave me this day before yesterday, and since then, there's some additional bills that I even found that we need to start looking at, and I think there's some bills that you've seen that we already know it's not going anywhere. And so, let's not waste our energies on those types of things, but let's be involved and follow it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Bedison?
Mr. Mayor, I know that we have very little left on the agenda, but I'd like to move for a short break.
We have a motion, second. For recess, all those in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carries. Call this meeting back to order. We are still under reports. Ann?
...to provide information to the public about our election. Right now, we're in the election process for councillor in District One and councillor in District Three. The candidates for councillor in District One are Cynthia Ann Bedison and Ronald G. Perez. The candidate for councillor in District Three is Jose A. Ray Jr. Election day is March 3rd, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and will be held at our voting convenience center at Silver City Women's Club on Silver Heights Boulevard. Right now, absentee voting is occurring at City Hall. Tomorrow, early voting begins on the vote tabulator machine and runs through February 27th. We're open Monday through Friday, from 8:00 to 5:00, except for next Monday, we are closed for President's Day. So I encourage voters to, you know, if they'd like to vote early, come on to City Hall, and we can take care of you, with the exception of next Monday. So, what else? I think that's it. I just strongly encourage voters to come and vote. It's something that all of us should participate in, and I really hope that the District One registered voters and the District Three registered voters will come out and support the town's election and get out there and vote. If I don't see you at City Hall, I hope to see you March 3rd.
Thank you, Ann. Next item on the agenda is, under unfinished businesses, approval, disapproval of ordinance number 1236, an ordinance adopting the restoration of the Silco Theater as an economic development project within, and for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District pursuant to Section 5-10-2B NMSA 1978 Local Economic Development Act, and Section 16-21A of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, or an agency thereof. I'll start off with just mentioning, this has been one of my pet projects, and this ordinance that is in front of us is predominantly due to a $100,000 grant from Secretary Barella with the New Mexico Economic Development Department. Right now, we basically have $100,000 in hand from the secretary that is specifically for theaters in New Mexico, and only for theaters in New Mexico. And he wants to give us this money and is willing to do so, as long as we have this very simple ordinance. So this is a means to the ultimate end of having a restored theater in town, and I'm very happy that the secretary is willing to do that. A little background to aid in this project and to help the community understand why we're doing this is, several years ago, the Silver City Main Street Project, who has been a partner with the town for economic development, started looking at getting into the Silco Theater and renovating it, and over time, built up nearly $100,000 of community donations, and also received a lot of money, I don't remember how much exactly, but it was in the neighborhood of $150,000 from the New Mexico Economic Development Department Main Street funds, that are earmarked by the state only for Main Street communities. So that money could not be used by the state for anything else, other than these funds. So the Silver City Main Street Project has brought in hundreds of thousands of dollars to this project outside of town funds, but in many cases, that could only be used by either a Main Street project or the theater very specifically. So it's been real helpful in seeing this project done, and it's really put the onus on us to get this done. One of the reasons why this is also being looked at by the town is because of certain state laws, that even though we're using Main Street funds by the state, or these LIDA funds that are earmarked for theaters, it needs to go to municipality. So the only way that these funds would have been used successfully is if the town took ownership, which it did, with the original Main Street funds, and has really put this ball in our court to at least administer it and see that it comes to fruition. So far to date, the town has borrowed money on behalf of this project, and those borrowed funds are being repaid through a lease agreement with the Silver City Main Street Project, who is a community partner, is a private public partner with the Town of Silver City. And so far, they've been making good on that obligation, and at this point, no town funds have been utilized out of the general fund. So it's real exciting that we've even been able to get this far and still protect our community and their general fund. But that even being said, does that mean that we are, by taking all these actions, without any obligation or without risks? No, we definitely have some obligations, we definitely do have some risks. Now, that has been greatly reduced by these individuals who have been volunteering for the Main Street Project through our state partnerships and through these funds, and it's been nice, the fact that we've been able to get this far without our own funds. But at this point, there is such a small gap that I, for one, you know, as we move forward, I am not opposed at the Town of Silver City helping out in the future, and this is something that we absolutely do need. This has been one of the biggest economic hardships for our community to progress and move out of this economic downturn. We are less attractive to potential professionals, we are less attractive to potential families moving in. We, from a cultural standpoint, this is an absolutely vital economic driver for us to turn away and consider that the fruits of all the labor of the Main Street Project and all those hundreds of thousands of dollars of state money that they want to see go into community theaters and to Main Street communities, it would mean that we are really not interested in driving our economy forward. And I, for one, I ran on a platform that I was gonna try to position us to move our community forward and help our economy through whatever means was available, especially if I could do so with mitigating the risks and obligations to our community to the best of my ability, and I see this as doing that. And like I said, this specific ordinance that we're doing the final reading today is merely to secure $100,000 that's, basically, I believe the check's written, it just, I think this is just a matter of the mailbox rule, they just wanna put it in that mailbox once this thing happens. And at this point, this doesn't further our obligations outside of, we better spend that $100,000 on the Silco. That being said, I will turn it over to the sponsor, Councilor Ray, and if he wants to have any of our other staff help him out with articulating the details. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. To me, this is gonna be a good thing. I am all for it, and I will tell you why I'm all for it, because Main Street has done a lot of things for Silver, a lot of things. It's hard to get money for different projects. Main Street is very popular in the state of New Mexico. We need something like this for this theater to be here in Silver, we need it. People have commented to me and to all of us, that why are we spending money on the Silco Theater? Well, we have to spend money to make money, and people wanna go downtown. It's a nice location, it's gonna be a very nice theater when it's done. I support this. And with that, I move to approve ordinance number 1236, an ordinance adopting the restoration of the Silco Theater as an economic development project within and for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District pursuant to Sections 5-10-2B NMSA 1978 Local Economic Development Act, and Section 16-21A of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, and further authorizing the execution of a project participation agreement and intergovernmental agreement between the town and the state of New Mexico for an agency thereof.
Councilor? We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number 1236, an ordinance adopting the restoration of the Silco Theater as an economic development project within and for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District pursuant to Section 5-10-2B NMSA 1978 Local Economic Development Act, and Section 16-21A of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, and further authorizing the execution of a project participation agreement and an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the state of New Mexico for an agency thereof. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to comment that one of the things about the Silver City Main Street Project is it's always listed as the top destination for our visitors, and anything that we can do to enhance and drive the economy in our downtown, and to bring in more visitors to our town that will spend money, which is also driving the economy, is something that I support. And I think that the mayor did an excellent job of explaining how, at this point, there have been actually no funds expended by the town, in the sense of real offense. Instead, it's all about making sure that this public-private partnership that we have with Silver City Main Street in the town, and then of course, the state agencies that are granting different funds for these specific purposes, that it continues to work and that we succeed in success. I mean, the project has moved quite well along with the Silco, and I know there's not much more, in some respects, left to do as there was at the beginning of the project. So I think that, and I support this ordinance, and I think in passing this ordinance, we'll be able to get that $100,000 check that we know is waiting for us, and will be sent as soon as this ordinance is approved. Thank you.
Any other discussions? Councilor Amos Smith?
My question, and I'd like to echo that this is a private-public partnership, and that case studies and various research on revitalization of historic theaters show that there is a clear economic development boom that follows somewhere between two and seven years after. We are in this for the long game, and as my colleague over here says, we are authorizing somebody else to spend some money, so that we can make some money. And my hope is that we can get her done.
Mr. Scavron, is some of the comments that I made, is that reflective of what this ordinance is? Can you remind us a little bit of some of the details and background of this?
Your explanation was perfect. Even though it's always been contemplated to revitalize downtown, that the Silco was a worthy project, and Main Street has put a lot of effort into it, and the town has helped them out, all for the benefit of the community. It was discussed during, when the town adopted its metropolitan redevelopment, it's been discussed pretty much over the years, every time we talk about downtown economic development or economic development plan. What the legislature did is they allocated a chunk of money, and it was very specific, they recognized the economic value of theaters, and here we have a town that doesn't have a main theater. So the money was coming to the town, they anticipated that the theater might be owned by a private party, therefore, they went through Therefore, they went through, they had a list of requirements that they normally would have if the town was dealing with a private party owning the theater. When it was pointed out to the state that the city itself owns the theater, some people up in Santa Fe, very creative people, came up with another way that we could satisfy the requirements in the legislative bill. And that was worked out, and the money is waiting for us in order to fulfill one requirement that we agreed upon was to have an ordinance that adopted it formally as a project. So that they could put it into their file, close the file, send us off the money. And that's exactly what's going on today. There's nothing new that's happening except to fulfill an obligation required by Economic Development Department. And that was to give them proof that this specific project was adopted by the town, and that when you vote, that will accomplish that.
Thank you. You know, there's also, you know, there's always concern, and this is something as a, as a local businessman, as somebody who, who helps and works with local business people. You know, I, I also fear and never want to see the town in a potential competition with those individuals who may want to be doing something for profit. And this is a project that I fully support because, for a couple of reasons. One is there currently is not another theater that we are competing for that is working towards a profit. And two, we could potentially, as we grow and move forward, see the benefits of a for-profit theater come in and potentially bring in a multiplex and such. This theater, this project right here, still would not be in competition with a multiplex or more of your modern cinema. This is, this is much more of a cultural project that could easily be converted and, and moved forward by the Main Street Project and adapt over time to become a stage theater, a, a meeting venue, something for, as a, a convention, a place to hold conventions, et cetera, and still have certain attributes that are like a cinema and, and provide that experience for those who want to be in an old theater like this that aren't necessarily looking for or competing against a, a, a multiplex. So, so I think this fits a lot of the, the different pieces in my mind, even as a business person and, and somebody who doesn't want to compete with, with for-profit ventures. And so, so I'm very excited on, on multiple fronts. This is fitting a bill that, in many cases, if I was to look at this five years ago, I would have thought was impossible, to meet so many of those elements, those positive elements, and, and have such a low relative risk and obligation to our community. And I fully support, I, I encourage the, the councils to support this, this resolution. Any further discussion or comments? We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance number 1236, an ordinance adopting the restoration of the Silco Theater as an economic development project within and for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District pursuant to Section 5-10-2B NMSA 1978 Local Economic Development Act and Section 16-21A of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, and further authorizing the execution of a project participation agreement and an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the state of New Mexico or an agency thereof. Roll call.
Councilor Condon?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Bettison?
Aye.
Motion carries.
No public discussion?
Not at this point.
Sorry.
Next item on the agenda, under new business, discussion and vote on changing the regular council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, February 24th, 2015, to Thursday, February 19th, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. at the Grant County Administration Center.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Bettison?
Um, the, our meeting on Tuesday, February 24th is actually the beginning of Municipal Day. Municipal Day actually takes place on Wednesday, February 24th and, I mean, 25th. And I will be attending as along, as well as another counselor, I think. And I will also, on Wednesday, February 25th, be in the New Mexico Municipal League Board of Directors Meeting that's also held on Municipal Day. So it's an opportunity for our municipality to join with the 105 or 106 other municipalities in the state to express support for various legislation that's critical to us and to municipal revenues, and an opportunity for me to, to be present at the Board of Directors Meeting and continue to promote the unique qualities of Silver City and its needs. So that's the reason behind it. And with that, I'd like to move to approve changing the regular town council meeting schedule for Tuesday, February 24th, 2015, to Thursday, February 19th, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. at the Grant County Administration Center.
Council Amos Smith?
I will have a second to add motion.
We have a motion second to change the regular council meeting schedule for Tuesday, February 24th, 2015, to Thursday, February 19th, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. at the Grant County Administration Center. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council Bettison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
We have a motion second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.